Well, it's closing up. Let's uh. You got it going?
No, it's going.
Okay, let's have a square. We've got Director Palmer, Director Shot, Director Land, myself, Director Robinson, and Director Ward present. Director Gaines and Director Millian are not here. And we'll open up this workshop, the Rule Committee. We have Mr. Hildbrandt from our neighboring district, U Valley. Try and help us with this process a bit. And Soarwig is here. I haven't been able to reach out to any of the other former directors. In the last week, I've been rather busy myself. Anybody want to get started on anything particular?
Everybody you want to lead it or where you want to go?
Well, I'm gonna work on it. Well. Now, we could do any number of things. We could start just by going through them from beginning to the end, but one of the things that I think we probably ought to look at right off the bat are the fact that we have uh test permits that are out that haven't gone through the process. So I think we need to start right there with that section. Since that's something we're gonna have to do, right? Those are gonna be coming up. We need to get those finished out and we need to know what we have to do in order to do that. So. I think we ought to start with talking about testing permits, since that's gonna come up. I'm sure we're gonna have hearings coming up. It's my understanding that there are people that are requesting to finish up their testing permits, so we gotta do that.
Yeah.
We need to know how. So. Let's talk about what happens whenever you want to have a testing permit. And read through that section of the rule. Anybody want to take a stab at it? Do they think they know what happens?
Nope, so um. I know there's only the short.
By the way, is Greg on? Jim on this or?
He's supposed to be on Jim as well.
Yeah, well, he's available to him.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I was making sure.
Yeah, he's not, they're not, either one of them's not on yet.
Okay, so the way that I understand this. Uh, you come in and you ask for a permit that's gonna be something over domestic use, over seventeen and a half gallons a minute. Um. You come in and request that and you go through the testing permit base to get that. So what does that require? How do you do that?
First, they gotta fill out the application. It has to be filed. You gotta meet their minimum requirements.
Yeah, away from surge, waste water. Septic tanks.
Realistically, um they're probably gonna come in and drill a well before they ever ask for a permit. Because they don't know if they're gonna hit water or not. That's real.
What they do in U Valley is, most of the time, is they'll come in and tell me, I think I want to get your additional well and tell them, was anybody around you who's got one? I mean, you know. So if they say, well, no, I said, well, my suggestion to you would be that you go out and drill a domestic well, fill in that petition for a domestic well, drill that, see how that works out. If it, if it will pump, you know, quite a bit of water, then you can get some drillers to come back and pour it out and make a real well out of it, you know. Fill out the application, run, we require them to run an add to paper. So that for public notice. We figure add to paper one time is better than to put the deal on the door for ten days.
Well, they probably have a lot more exposure that way. A lot more people are gonna see it.
We get a few people that question, you know, when they, because they had, we have a little template they have to fill out, like how many acres you're planning on irrigating, how much water they're planning on getting, those kind of things.
Now, is that for the, is that for the drilling, the well process, or is that for the, when they come back in and want to get the permit?
That's if they want to get the, when they get the permit to irrigate.
That's one, okay, so.
But just a, just, they can get a domestic permit. And I recommend to them a lot of times, I used to tell people all the time, they'd say, I want to dig a tank. I said, well, go get a backhoe and dig a hole and make sure that there's really something down there, you know, to make it worth digging a tank over. And so I tell them, you know, drill a well, and if it turns out that it won't do but twenty gallons a minute, then you got a nice livestock well. So at least you got something.
So realistically, nobody's gonna go and punch a sixteen inch hole unless they've already hit water.
Well, I wouldn't. I mean, I've seen people do that.
Maybe some.
Well, I've had some, some people that had more money, they had good sense. And, and uh, they do that, you know, but, and sometimes it works out for them, sometimes it doesn't.
So if they came in and did it, if they came in and did it through that process and did a domestic use well. This would just simply be a matter of registering where it was at, complying with the rules on, on, on distance and drilling the well, and we get the well log.
Yeah.
They, they put in a deposit, and that's as simple as that. If they get a good well, then they want to get a permit, they come back and they go through the testing process in these rules.
Well, if they, you know, when they came back the second time, maybe at least what they were talking about, saying.
Well, then they got water.
Yeah, I've got water and I think I've got this much water, so I want to apply for a, you know, irrigation permit that will do this or whatever.
Biggest difference is we just call it testing, they call it operating. But he's been doing this for years and they've been successfully issuing those permits, so you might want to.
Well, part of the logic we had was, is somebody, and I have had them. It costs a lot of money to plug a well properly.
Yeah.
You know, with the drilling and everything. And I have had them drill a big hole in the ground and come back and say, well, yeah, this thing didn't produce near as much water as I thought it would. Well, Vic, you gotta plug it. What do you mean, I gotta spend twenty thousand dollars more to plug that thing? You know, and then, and then we get into a hassle with that. So that's why we got to where we recommended you drill a domestic well. At least plug it is cheaper if you, if you end up having to do that, you know.
Right, if you don't get what you're looking for.
Yeah. And if you do, then you can move forward, you know, and, and go the next step.
Which would be the permitting process.
Yes, sir.
To go to that. So first, they'd look to see if they had it, more than likely, if they're smart, or don't have money to throw out the window.
Yeah.
That's a simple process. Then they would come back and they would go through a permitting process. Underneath our rules, we call it testing. Um. But I think that would jump us right to three four oh three, which are requirements for a testing permit. Uh, jumps us right into section three period.
Vic, do you guys do testing permits, or if the person does their domestic well and then they want another one, you just do a permit?
We, we have testing permits, but like I say, kind of encourage them to drill a domestic well, fill out a domestic well permit. Because it's easier to get them to, to plug nothing than this, you know, a big hole in the ground.
And when you're saying domestic well, that would be what we are calling exempt.
Exempt, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right. But then after they do that exempt well or domestic well.
And then they come back and, well, I just did two this morning, where up at South Utopia. They drilled, they drilled some well, they made, they were gonna, their intent was to make domestic well, they drilled them. And then they came back and they said, you know, the driller told me we can, it's a great, you know.
Big well.
Yeah, because it's additional feed and you have to go through additional hoop. And, and, but, yeah, we can change it over, we can, we can change the permit from a domestic well to a irrigation well.
Right, but do you guys have the testing well process in the middle where they gotta, you know, do what all this says? Like, you know, monitor reports and see how it affects everybody?
Yeah, we have, like I said, we can run an add to paper for one thing. So if there's any neighbors have any concerns, well, they can, they can voice them. But we also make a, have spacing rules like y'all do, I think y'all have. We make them go through to make sure they're in the spacing props in. And I have had them where they, where they come in and say, hey, this well will do a thousand gallons a minute, my other well won't do but eight hundred, you know. Well, that's great. You start choking your other well back, you can get a thousand gallons, but you're still gonna have to be so many gallons a minute within the spacing group.
Right.
So, yeah, the easiest way to tell them is, if you want a thousand gallon minute well here, you better be two thousand feet from that other thousand gallon minute well. Because I was thinking a gallon a foot, so.
Right, but there's no intermediate phase like here. They would, whenever they decide get a test permit, and then that phase would go, and then they have to come back and get a regular permit.
Yes, sir. Well, we, we skipped that testing well permit.
Yeah.
And went, and went to the other because we found it to be easier.
Maybe. Now, Vic, is that, is that your, uh, your rules underneath the U Valley County, or is that EAA rules?
No, that's our rules. To get an EAA well is, is a whole lot more difficult to get, do anything with us.
Right.
You, to get an EAA well, just a domestic well. You have to, you know, apply for the well, they have to, you have to go send them a certified dealers. You own the property and all that kind of stuff. Uh, you can't be within, I wanna think it's like a half a mile of a, of a permanent water source, like, you know, if there's a city water line running uh, in Medina County, they have a couple of rural water systems.
Uh huh.
And so they won't let them get a domestic well. And, I mean, if they make them jump through a bunch of hoops just to get a domestic well, or an irrigation well. They make them walk in and prove that they already have the, the permit, because there's, they're not issuing any more permits for water there. They make them show where that they bought the water from Joe Blow or whatever, and they bought X number of acre feet. And so they're gonna issue a permit for that. That's just to be able to drill the irrigation well.
Wow, whether you get the water or not.
Yeah, if you, if you don't get it, then you can sell that permit to somebody else, but you're gonna have it before you get to drill.
Yeah, wow.
And Vic, in the part of U Valley County that's not under the EAA. You guys are not over permitted.
Not yet. Not yet. We, we, uh, we're probably getting close in the, in the beauty. But uh. And, and, and part of our problem there is, and we did, we passed the rules several years ago, we we got into a little court battle over it, but where if you had an Edward's well, we give two and a half acre feet for irrigating it. If you had an Edward's well, you get two, two acre foot permit from the Edward. And you want to put, because there's areas in U Valley where you can get off your chalk or a beauty on top of your Edward. So that's fine, but you're only getting a half acre foot. And we had a few people that, that didn't like that idea. And the reason they didn't like that idea was the reason we passed the rule. Because they were gonna sell their Edward permit to San Antonio and then pump, and then pump out of the beauty or whatever. We didn't feel like that was fair, so. Okay, thank you.
So if we go to section three. Particularly three four oh three, it shows the different types of permits that we have. That interim phase that you're talking about, Director Palmer, is the same thing that was being contemplated of a permit without hearing. It's a permit for an existing or new well that has not had a hearing by the board. Or has not been through a contested case hearing. All well production is on a temporary basis. The pro, the thought process behind that at the time, because I was talking to a bunch of people that did that, uh, was to give a year to see if drawdown in, in the proposed permit was affecting neighboring wells. Um. At the time, it was written rather broadly. Um. It requires the district to monitor anyone who requests interested party status regardless of what unit their well may be in, or how far away they may be from the project. Um. It was supposed to be limited to management zones, but there were, were no management zones. And uh, they're still rough at this point. Um. I still think the concept is good, being able to see what it impacts in the area. Uh, I, I don't know if it's doable or fixable or not. Uh, the other option is to go straight to the hearing. At the time. The concept was this was supposed to be easier, not more difficult.
Than the hearing.
Uh, than the hearing, than going straight to the hearing. Uh, that, that may not be the case.
And there's in the context of these rules, when they were written, we'd say two things, extreme hearing to where everybody and their dog showed up to protest without their traditional interests, and the hearings were costly and horrible. And we went to the opposite, where somebody came in for a huge permit and no one showed up but one landowner to protest it. And then we also had a general manager who was handing out permits. So we didn't want that. We wanted the permits, you know, come before because it was a sizable permit, so. You do need a process for the public sees, or you need to have a very, it's been there for everything.
Well, I think the code's pretty clear. I mean, it's all supposed to be, it's all supposed to be out in the open, and the governing body is supposed to make the decision. Uh, that's, that's why it, you know, I mean, everybody comes on, and any kind of automatic deal, or it's done by staff or anything like that. It, it usually always comes to the board.
Me too.
And it, really, that's kind of what the code indicates anyway. Um.
Yeah, in, in general, Wes, I mean, I would have to think that, given our situation around here. The testing permit process, whether it is altered, and it probably needs to be altered in some way. But I think around here, given you know, the place that we're at around here with how many permits we have, amount permitted, and, you know, the fact about the DFC last year and about the creek being dry the last four years and rain being down, I think testing is a good idea in Kenny County. I don't know what it's gonna look like after we modify it, but I'm not sure that we want to get rid of it.
Uh, uh, I like the concept. Um. I think that there needs to be more control over what we're monitoring and the scope of where we're monitoring it at. Um. When, when a well is in production and you're drawing water out, you're drawing your groundwater out. You've created a cone of depression from that well that radiates out and affects whatever water source is feeding that hole from whatever level is coming into it. It's affecting it in a cone of depression going out and away from it, uh, radially. So we need to be looking at it that way. We need to be looking close in, we need to be looking at the same structure to really know what it's doing. And so as far as modifying these to make them work, we have to be able to do that and make them work. If we, if we can't really look in the immediate area, uh, and in the right layer. We're not really accomplishing a test.
Is that something Jim could help us with? Like, you know, when you talk to Jim, like, he goes, oh, yeah, you know, we gotta monitor this and monitor that?
I, I think, I think other districts and other that are doing any type of monitoring, when they do a test process, we need to look at that. Our engineers and our hydrologists, our consultants are the ones to talk to. I went through this process for an amendment. And the way the rules are written, if you do an amendment, you have to go through the testing process. Uh, the testing process had a lot of openness in it, where if you followed it by the letter, I would be putting transducers eight and nine miles from where I'm at. Um. It wasn't going to give results to show what impact I actually could have. So the other option within the rules is a pump test that's set up by the applicant and agreed to by the district. So you gotta go to the district consultants, the hydrologists, and everything to agree to your pump test. I designed that pump test based upon the dye trace study and my neighbors that were near me that I knew I connected to them. Because we put dye in this hole, it came out my well, came out in their well, came out in this well. Those are the wells I wanted to monitor. I knew I was connected, whatever layer they were connected in, I knew I was connected to them. I wanted to know what the drawdown was in there. So that's the way I did it. I think we need, if we're gonna continue this process, then we need something like that. We, we need, we need to bring the level up.
And like Jim designed how it's monitored, not, it's not controlled by people, but it's controlled by Jim and the, and the offer and the test.
Well, I want, I use the, I use the pump test as a way to get results. Because I wanted to know the impact it had on my neighbors, okay? I wanted to know if I was gonna negatively impact them. We need to have monitoring set up where we're gonna know if it has impact in that area, not where we're monitoring miles and miles apart or in different geological strata. There, there's no point doing that. We, we need to have it in tight, we need to see what the cone of depression is doing whenever, whenever they're operating that well. Uh, that's the whole purpose of monitoring it for a testing period, right? See if you're gonna draw down the neighbor and he has to lower his well thirty foot. That's the point, so the way they're written, you can go by and do the minimum. You know, I, I could have gone by and stuck a transducer seven miles away, and stuck one over here seven miles away. And, you know, done what I did for a year and came back in and said, you know, well, it didn't show anything. And it's not really, it defeats the purpose. We really want to know what, what it does do.
So modification of the rule would be determined zone of monitoring by water district hydrologist and engineer in cooperation with the board?
Yeah, there's some other things in here too that are, that are bear worth mentioning too. Um. You know, in order to one of the things that happened in the original, uh, contested case hearings were
With approval by the board.
Folks were, folks were protesting that weren't even from Kenny County. Didn't own property here. Uh, we had people protesting for adjoining counties. Um, it, it was a free fall. This, the way I understand these, these were set up where if you do not allow monitoring, you can't get the protestant status. So you, you have to
You have to let the district on.
You have to let the district look, well.
The well is gonna tell us what happened. You don't get to, the well.
Right, okay, the well does. So here's the thing. We lack data.
Right.
Right? We like that in a lot of these holes. Um, I was thrilled, the, the well had, the pump had never been out of the hole since my dad brought property in seventy-two. I wasn't thrilled when it went down, but I was thrilled that I got the opportunity to log it and video it when it was out of the hole. EAA came down and did that. The district's got that. We need that on more holes. Okay, if we can, if, if a requirement is to give access so the district can monitor it. Then why don't we go ahead and get the whole log and find out where the water's coming from in that hole?
What direction it's going, all that stuff, a camera down the hole.
Well, any, well, as a part of that, I'm just saying, you use that process to get more valuable data that we don't have. A lot of the problems that we're having right now with what we've put into our system is some of these wells were drilled almost a hundred years ago. And if you haven't read those well logs, uh. Figuring out what level they're in and what strata they're in is not really easy. Uh, it, it's, I'm amazed at what, uh, Jim and Bill were able to do with a bunch of that stuff. Um, but when we get an opportunity that we can put some instrumentation down in a well, we need to take full advantage of it as a district. We need to get all the data that we can out. Depth, uh, water direction, speed. Um, bedding planes, anything that we can get out of it. But yes, I think it needs to be designed by them. I think, I think we need to rely on them. They're probably
And I think that that coincides with each, each test that you're talking about.
You're probably gonna have to have board approval on it at some point, because they don't want to, nobody wants to be pegged with being the, the one that makes the call. They're gonna stick it on the board, but it needs to come from them.
Who's gonna pay for that process?
That's another thing too, that I, I think that we, we have to, have to talk about. Uh, is it realistic to make someone that's trying to get fifty acre foot pay for all the monitoring?
I think if you design a good monitoring program, you can get it there and down to where it's, it's not unreasonable if, if they're drilling the well to get you an electric log and, and, and those kind of things. Uh, and if you get a good log here and you have a hydrologist on staff or access to one, they can look at a good log and tell you, and then, like you said, put monitors in close enough to it that you can tell whether they're really drawing somebody's house well down or not.
One of the things that we, one of the things that, that are in here right now is that the monitoring is done by the district at the permittee's expense. I don't think that's particularly realistic uh, in a lot of instances. Um, especially if you start looking at what it costs to rent a transducer, it's less to buy one. Uh, they're quite expensive.
It's required by the district.
Well, there's, I, I just, I'm not I'm not saying the district ought to pay for all of it, okay? I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting either way. It doesn't seem fair to put the entire burden on, on, on the guy that's asking for the permit. Particularly if he's asking for fifty hundred eight acre per permit. Now, if he's asking for ten thousand acre foot ship out of the county, I really don't care if he asks for all of it.
That's a little dear.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, I'm not I'm not trying to be all one way or the other on it. I just don't think it's completely reasonable to shift that burden completely to the permittee, particularly the way they're written right now. Um, and not to mention the district didn't do it, and what the permittee is gonna do is they're gonna opt for the pump test anyway. Because it's cheaper.
Well, then too, you know, going back to the fifty acre boat rule that y'all were contemplating earlier. Maybe, I hate to complicate this more, but you know, if somebody asked him for a whole lot, they'd design a test for five thousand acre feet as opposed to fifty acre feet, you know? If you just come in and want fifty acre feet.
I would think, I would think, I mean, if I was, if I was, if I was designing a monitoring for one versus the other, you know, potential impact from five thousand versus fifty is a lot bigger. You're gonna have a lot bigger monitoring area. I mean, you know, it's only gonna make sense. You're gonna have to, that cone of depression is, is potentially much bigger. So you have to start looking out a little further for, you know, how far out does it actually affect? Um. And, you know, if they're only sipping on it
That's different than
during their, during their pump, as opposed to running it, you know, like they're really gonna run it when they're withdrawing it. You won't get a good result. See, the EAA gotta watch that too. Uh, you can't withdraw it three hundred gallons a minute when you need a thousand. And expect good results on your monitoring. They're gonna have to withdraw near that rate, so you can actually see what it's doing.
And how many hours?
Hmm, exactly.
Hours make a big difference too.
Well, the hours of time, the drawdown and the recovery period after they shut it off.
Yeah, those are all questions that think if you want to get your consultant to weigh in on.
Well, I just think that those are, I mentioned those things because it, those are all things that you're gonna collect through that year. Or, those are things that you should potentially collect through that year, and then the analyzing to come up with your answer of, yes, we're gonna give you this much, no, we're not gonna give you quite that much. Uh, whatever the, whatever the answer is to the permanent applicant.
Yeah.
Uh, but all of those, all of those things add up to yes or no. Uh, whether you're gonna get your permit.
How much you're gonna get and what the tolerance is gonna be, that's
Yeah, exactly.
Goes back to drought management plans, so. It all, it all, thank goodness y'all have Jim, because that really it makes it less of a arbitrary decision and more of one based on science. That's the great part for y'all.
Let me ask, let me ask you this, Vic. Uh, our rules compared to yours, is the U Valley District a lot stricter than us or less?
Are we a lot stricter?
Are you a lot stricter than?
In, in some ways you are, in some ways you are.
Okay.
I mean, it, and, and the district's rules are like shoe sizes, they're all different, you know? Uh. What would work in, in U Valley County won't work in Medina County. What works in U Valley County won't work in, in Kenny County, because of one thing, rainfall differences and the recharge difference.
Get a little more rain for the east to go.
We ain't, none of us kidding any right now, but I mean.
I said a little more. I didn't say a lot.
I'll tell you a lot. I had a guy from Midland the other day as a permit witness and Guy from Midland the other day had the permit with us and he said, hey, if you get a good rain, we'll send someone my way. I said, if we get a good rain, there won't be none left sitting.
Well, talking about, talking about differences, you know, just as, as example, cause you're talking about the differences in the rule. Y'all are completely tax-based district in Uvalde, right?
Yeah, we're.
You don't charge any fees.
This district was created to have changed the legislation the session before to where y'all could, you could be taxed, you could be at lower tax and collect the fee.
That's not what they told us when we wrote the legislation, Vic.
I'm gonna tell, tell you that the year before y'all, y'all, or two years before y'all applied, that was the, the standard.
Yeah, you could only have one or the other.
You had to have a lower tax or fees, one or the other, but no both.
Wow.
And, and, you know, the average person doesn't realize what it takes to run a district. You know, I mean, financially, I mean, you have, you have to do monitoring all the time and. You have to pay for science and that science ain't cheap. And if you don't pay for the science, you're in trouble. I mean.
Well, the, the reason, the reason that we went Abalorum. Over here instead of going with a fee-based district, what we were told was we could have one or the other. We decided to go Abalorum. Because there simply wasn't enough use. To have enough fees. Pay for a district and that's, and that's why we did it that way. And everybody said, you'll never get it passed. So we limited it to ten cents.
Well, ours is two cents. Ours is two cents on a hundred dollar evaluation.
You're strapped a lot more than we are.
We're getting a lot less than that right now. We're getting a half a cent.
Well, they only, well, the board initially said it at a nickel. We'll never get to ten cent.
Well, it's pretty hard to go out of, every year when we.
When you're strapped to three to eight percent, you can't, you know, there's only so much you can go up.
Well, the only time we went to two cents at one time because we had a little lawsuit thing brewing and. We didn't have any problems with, with doing it. Nobody complained about it or anything else. Uh, one gentleman was planning on, on pumping water out of the Austin Chalk and the Buda. And there's a, when they wrote fourteen seventy-seven, they created, created the Edwards. They said that if you add water to the aquifer, you could get a credit for it. And that credit could be turned into cash.
I remember, there was, there was speculation in this county.
We had a gentleman that, that decided that I could take out of this pocket and put it in that pocket and be richer, you know? And, uh, the people on the Austin Chalk were all saying, wait a minute, when he takes all that water out of there, what's gonna happen to my well?
Exactly.
And, and we ended up going to two cents. We started back down after that. We went to two cents and. Nobody complained. Actually, I had a couple of little ladies, hey, that's it, is that all you need? You know?
That, is that rule still, that rule still there, isn't it?
Is that on the evidence?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was, cause it was a.
Oh, it was created, that, a lot of fourteen seventy-seven was written with Sal's in mind. I mean, they wrote that it was because Sal's is one of the, takes pretty big pockets to be able to build a dam to recharge water into the aqu. Well, to do that, you're gonna have to be able to go back to your board and look at your budget and say, why am I doing this? And so they put that in there so that Sal's or whoever could recoup some of the investment they did.
Well, I, I was just. Wondering if it was still in there because there's still projects like that being talked about. I mean. Before this district was ever created, there was one in Kenny County where they were gonna, they were gonna pump out of Austin Chalk over west of town. Then we're gonna go over here and reinjecting Uvalde. And then here in the last four or five years, there was one out of. Reinjecting the Seco Seep.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I brought up to Dorsey, I was out there, he used to be their attorney one time. We were talking about that. I think they've been in business for like twelve years. And I said, Dorsey, have y'all ever done any of that? Oh, I said, how's that working out there, Dorsey?
Still haven't got your problem out of Uvalde. Tell you that either. Anyway.
So you've been through the pump tests?
Yeah.
Not the testing.
Well, I, I had the option. I mean, I, I.
I knew you.
I had, I had to either go through a year worth of monitoring, which my argument was I'm not building a hundred thousand square foot bottle. Water bottling facility to run it for a year and not know whether I get a permit. It's insane. So that's not gonna happen. Or I could do the pump test.
The logic behind the use it in here and see what happens with somebody who hypothetically already had their use. And so they were gonna start using it for that purpose immediately.
Or, well, you know, anybody could ask for anymore or, or anything else. It. I don't, I don't mind the pump test. Uh, you know, what we talked about twenty-five years ago was we'll follow the sign.
Right.
Um, you know, nobody wants to hurt anybody, nobody, particularly nobody wants to hurt their neighbor. Uh, out where I'm at, everybody's known that their well's connected. Fifty years. Yeah. Uh, well, soon as his grandfather started watering corn. In the spring, the artesian flow in the valley went away and it came back and fall when it's done. Just the way it works. Um. I like the idea of the pump test and I like the idea of testing in order to see, before you give someone a permit.
I agree.
Whether that. Withdraw is gonna impact, have any negative impacts around them.
Well, really the applicant should like that too.
Yes.
Sure. I mean, it's not, it's a shared resource. The net has pointed this out, uh. Our laws regarding it are, are kinda weak because. They say we have a right to it because it's under our ground, but you know, we don't account for the fact it's moving, going someplace else. And some of the water in this county is going to your county. And some of the water in this county is going over to Valverde County. Um, it's not staying here and it's not static. So. Everybody wants to use their share of it. That's fine. No one should wanna use more than what they, they ought to or hurt the neighbor. I don't want to.
You think about walking through it. What's gonna cost you sink a well? Is the process feasible? Cause there's three types of people, as I see it, that need non-exempt. People like debaters who already have a well sunk, who not used it in years, but may want to use it in the future. Some that have test permits out there already and then new people that want to drill. And so. How does that look? And that's what I kept saying, if I wanna go drill a well, how does it look? How would it look?
Vic, they had a, they had a rule. They passed a while back, you couldn't drill a well on less than ten acres. That came out, didn't it?
Uh, yeah, they, they threw that back. They, they gave districts the option. Of, of, uh, and I got called by county commissioner the other day in Uvalde, did we have that? And I said, no, we use spacing rule, the state uses, which is a hundred feet from separate tank and fifty feet of property land. And you can get a variance on those, uh, pressure cementing to the top of the formation so that. The separate tank issue won't leak into the aqu. Well, yeah, the state came up with that.
Well, I, I recalled it, it's been several years back. And then, you know, it's not in there anymore.
Well, they, like I said, they took it out and lent it to the districts, to do it within a district. It was, it was a state rule.
Yeah, that's what I recall.
They, they changed it from a state rule, leaving it with districts to do whatever they want.
Because I remember when it came into effect, it, it affected a whole lot of subdivisions started trying to do stuff differently.
Oh, yeah, they started making ten acre tracks.
Right, or, or they were, or they were, you know, there was one over here to drill a well, to service multiple tracks and then. All kinds of trouble with it. Yeah. I, I just assumed that was in response to that. But now it seems to have gone away. Now it's a district option whether they do it or not. I didn't know it was optional. Good enough.
Now, Vic, let me, let me ask you this on, uh, y'all cap, is there a cap on, uh. Water in, in the different aquifers so that you don't go over, uh, how much you permitted?
Yeah, we have, we have the GMA cap. Where, like at seven, where you have, is you have a Trinity. You're, you're looking at, you shouldn't, if you go over this, you're gonna start kind of a drawdown. Problem and that, that's gonna get a lot tighter. But they just passed a law, legislation, the government decided the other day. It's gonna re, put some things in that, so the GMA's are gonna have to be a lot more accurate about. Uh, going over their, over their budget, so to speak, in, in water. But yeah, uh, to answer your question, yes, we have. We have a cap, we have a, a figure that we use for the Austin Chalk, a figure that we use for the Buda. The problem with those are, and Leona, those, problem with those three is they're interconnected with the Edwards in some places. And depending on if the Edwards is higher or the Edwards is low, it, it's kinda like creek water, what they call perch water. It's a, you know, wells to either side. If the creek's high, you got plenty of water there. If the creek's low, well then that water is, is running to the creek. And so your perch water is, what they call a perch water, comes up in the hills and going down to this flat. And when it's in the flat, the creek's low, it doesn't go into the creek, so to speak. But if the creek gets low, then it seeks its own level, so it drops off into the creek and your, your well on the side of the creek over will get a lot lower.
So, so if you, if you, if you allow them a, a permit for a certain amount and then if that situation happens, are you able to cut them back?
We put in ours every five years that we review the permits every five years. And, and the reason we pick five years is because the GMA's on five years, everything's based for the government on a five-year setup. It's everything I say except for your.
Now, how does that work with your exist, with your existing historic use permit?
Sir?
How does that work with your existing historic use permit? You review those well?
Well, yeah, you, you can be cut back. Now, the trick to cutting them back is you have to cut everybody back equal. If you're gonna give a haircut, like I said, we give two and a half acre feet. If we decide that we, we are over pumping. And we're gonna cut a, the Austin Chalk back at, at to a quarter, to two and a quarter acre feet. Then everybody that's got a permit is gonna get cut back that way. If you start picking on individuals. You know, big users or whatever, then you're gonna end up in the courthouse. And I don't see how you can win. When they start pointing out that, hey, I'm the one that they're doing this to, you know? Basically, our theory is, and so far, we haven't lost one yet. Our theory is that we treat everybody, it may be bad, but we treat them all equally bad.
Do you? If, if. If you theoretically, if there's fifty thousand acre feet and somebody, and, and you reached your cap. If somebody comes in and wants more, do you cut everybody else back or do you just issue?
We only got there yet, but that's gonna be a.
That, that, nobody.
Where's my, here's my question, you know? Is it the permit amount or is it the amount that's being used?
Well, basically it's the amount being used, but, so you would have to cut everybody's permit. Well, theoretically, you should cut everybody's permit the same amount.
Permit or usage?
Permit. Because they're, they're, in our case, the permit is the use. They all get a permit for two and a half acre feet. So, per irrigated acre. So if you had fifty acres and you're irrigating, you get two and a half acre feet for fifty acres. If she has a hundred acres, she got twice as big a permit as you did. She can pump twice as much. But if you, if you say you're only getting two and a half acre feet, if you said, well, you're only getting two acre feet now, then everybody got the same cut. That make sense?
I guess so, but I'm, I'm talking about like if somebody has a permit for five thousand acre feet. But they only pumped twenty-five hundred last year. Are you gonna limit on the twenty-five hundred they pumped or on the actual permit size of five thousand?
Okay, see, so where we, where we limited their permit was the what, how much they were irrigating or what they were using it for.
So it would be off of last year's pumping?
Well, it'd be on, it would be on your, on your current crop.
What he's saying is. They don't have big permits over what people are using.
No.
We're regulating the permit by their use and how many acres they're, they're using it for.
It's gonna play a difference.
And like I said, we, we got into it, uh, with a guy that was partnered with Briscoe. Decided that he could get some Austin Chalk wells out there and. They had enough space that they could put the wells in between their Edwards wells. And I said, no, we're not gonna do that. We had a bunch of public hearings over it. We had, we almost went to contested case hearing, but we didn't. What, when he had to get two different lawyers, but the third lawyer finally told him, look, I'm gonna tell you the same thing the other two told you, it's ain't gonna work. Because we limited everybody the same. Fact of that, we treated everybody equal. We said, nobody gets more than two and a half acre feet. If you had an Edwards permit, then you're gonna get a half acre foot to go. If that wasn't enough, we're gonna give you another half acre foot. But we can't see why you need three acre feet or six acre feet. Unless you're planning on selling part of it. And if you're planning on selling part of your Edwards permit, that's great. Take that cash and go do something with it because we're not giving you any more water to replace it.
And we don't have that dynamic here either, where people are selling their permits, cause they're not.
Like I say, it's one shooter that fit everybody.
So when a user cries that they're out of water, they're actually out of water?
Yeah.
And you got the county.
Yeah, and we've never, we've never really had anybody that, that used more than their two and a half acre feet. Usually, well, I had a guy a couple of years ago call me and said, you didn't wanna, we have a requirement that you fill out. An application at the end of the year, tells how much you used last year. I had a guy at Montel call me and said, I don't wanna fill that out. I said, why? He said, I don't wanna lose part of my permit. I said, what do you mean lose part of it? So I didn't use much. See, you didn't use much. See, I've got a little coastal field. I've got a pivot on it. And by the time it would start from A and get back around to A again. I couldn't tell I had even watered. It was still burning. So I just quit pumping. I said, I call that water conservation skill. I mean, I'm not saying that there's, there's some people out there, most of them live in big cities and have a lot of money and. Blue to Uvalde that say, I don't give a damn, we're gonna run that pit twenty-four hours a day, you know? And usually, everybody calls and I, I'm gonna go talking to them. And it's not a pleasant conversation, but you know, I still end up talking to them. What you're doing is not gonna do anything but get us all in trouble and. And we're gonna, you're gonna get to find out who your lawyer is real friendly.
Yeah, well. That shows up, that shows up on their report though, doesn't it? When they do that?
Well, when they turn in their report, we can see how much they used. For the previous year. And, and like I said, we've never had anybody break their two and a half acre feet. Per, per acre they irrigate.
Even the one that's going around all day?
Well, somebody like that, I'll cut them off before they get to the end.
Oh, you advise them.
Yeah, we, we have a conversation long before they, we ever get that far.
So you tell them they're not doing any good with their irrigation or?
Basically, I explained to them, I had one, I had a couple of them that, that didn't, that didn't believe that. I had a tobacco lawyer one time. They drilled a well up at Montel and the driller, who's now no longer on this earth. Told him, oh, you hit an ocean of water under here. Instead of a twelve inch hole, we need to make this a sixteen inch hole. You know? And so the guy sent the permit in and I told, I called him up and told him, I said, look. For one thing, you don't need that big a hole. You know, a ten inch hole was gonna do more than, cause I knew what he was gonna irrigate. I said, a ten inch hole would do more water, use more water than you wanna use. Second off, when you, we run this in the paper, I can guarantee you, we're gonna get protests. And we're gonna be, you're gonna be entering the protest and the board's gonna be reviewing this. And he said, you know, I'm damn tired of people out there telling me what I can do and can't do. I'm just telling you that you don't need that big a hole. He said, well, can you prove it? I said, I can. I went to the soil conservation, I got a soil conservation engineer to show, show me some chart, give me charts. On how much water you can get out of an eight inch pipe, eight inch casing, ten inch casing and a twelve inch casing. Then I went to a pump installer and had him give me pump charts. And I, so I showed him, I said, for what you want, the, the amount of water you want to pump. You can get out of an eight inch casing, but you can do a twelve, ten inch casing and, and I had to work the pump half as hard. He said, well, so I'm gonna drill a twelve inch hole with us. Drill a twelve inch hole. He did. He put a submersible pump in it. It ran for three days. And it was exactly how I figured he was in. He was in a cave. He dragged the cave up, burned the pump up. It took a week for the damn thing to get enough water in to be able to find water. Then after a couple of months, it had enough water in it. You put another pump over there, it burned it up, you know, but he, he had deep pockets he didn't carry, you know, it was a good tank right off, I guess.
Filled up a little slow, did it?
After the second pump he burned up, he didn't replace it anymore. I went to school with it, with his former, I told his former, I said, you see, yeah, we're not replacing it anymore. He's, he's got tired of that program now, you know? He's not even gonna do that anymore. And he was just pumping water up to a dirt tank. The, the other thing on that was, I hadn't already knew it, but I'd asked some hydrologists. Where he was pumping the water up, further up into the ranch, into a tank, he was just recycling it. I mean. Coming back to the dam. It took you a while to get back there, but you know, it was going back to the thing's fine. He wasn't gated or anything, but he was a high-powered lawyer and he knew what he was talking about. He damn sure wasn't having some hick in Uvalde, telling what he needed to know. He damn sure wasn't having some hick in the valley, telling what he needed to know.
I wonder how much he, I wonder how much he spent on it.
Oh, he's got a fortune, you know?
Wow.
Let, let me ask you another question, Vic.
Sure.
This, this is the things that just pop into my head every. So when we, when we're doing, uh, our permits or, or, uh, testing and stuff like, y'all are doing like in three different aquifer, aquifers, four different aquifers?
Well, actually, we have three major aquifers and then then if you count the minor, we have like five or six minor. We have Austin chalk beauty, the on the gravel. Uh, and then we have perch water, gravel water, you know, like on the New Texas River. Say, that's another thing we do on our rules. If you have a permit to pump out of the New Acid River and you're drilling a well that we consider they're gonna be impacted the New Acid River, that counts as part of your two and a half acre feet. If you had, if you're irrigating a hundred acre field and you were gonna get two and a half acre feet, but you have a hundred acre permit from the state of Texas to pump out of the, out of the New Acid River. Well, the way we look at it, you're just impacting everybody downstream from you. So there's no reason for you to be able to get two and a half acre feet out of the gravel up there on top of that.
Now, now here, how many aquifers are in Kenny County?
Well, the only major one is the Edward Trinity, they have the Edwards.
So is it, is it, does it benefit us, uh, not to dependent, to depend on which aquifer you're pulling from? Like y'all do or?
I think, I think it does because like we were talking about earlier, it's kinda like being a kid, oldest kid in a, in a big family, your brother's gonna inherit your clothes, so.
One of the things that, one of the things I was referencing as far as straight up, um, you have different bedding planes that will feed the hole. Uh, some of the higher production irrigation wells out in Pinto Valley are typically cased down to around three hundred and sixty feet to get down below the Del Rio Clay and into the top of the Salmon Peak. And those bedding planes come in through the Salmon Peak and, and the McKnight Formation, about six hundred foot in there that that water comes out of. What I'm talking about is whenever we're monitoring anything around here, we don't know what formation they've gone down into or they're getting it out of. There can be other bedding planes that are feeding that hole, depending on how far it's cased down. You could have a, a well that's being fed by the Austin chalk and, uh, by the top, yeah, or the top of the, the Salmon Peak. Uh, you could have a, a hole that's fed with, from multiple sources. And one right over here that's not.
Well, I didn't see it.
One right over here that's fed by, by the middle one.
And your wells are supposed to be casing off those other aquifers. But you've got wells that were drilled back in the sixties that, you know, there's a lot of Austin chalk.
Co-mingling of waters wouldn't sound to anybody was concerned about.
I had, I had a argument with the Edwards one time, they were trying to make a little lady plug her well because it was an average irrigation well. But originally it was a chalk well, back in the fifties when it went dry, they drilled down into the chalk. And they said, great, when it come, when the chalk comes back, you're gonna have twice as much water, lady, you know, for the people that owned the farm at the time. And so their, their, their conversation whether it was, she wasn't gonna get a permit because she was gonna have to plug her well. Because it was.
Releasing water into the.
It was leaking water from the chalk.
Yeah.
You know, and there, and there's a lot of wells like that because they didn't change that rule until the mid-sixties when they started telling drillers, you have to case off any outside water.
I didn't know when that came, I knew the co-mingling of waters, I didn't know exactly when that came in.
It was the mid-sixties, late sixties, I think.
Okay, I, I, I didn't know when that it came into effect. I figured it was probably sometime, because I think it was the fifties when there was a lot of oil exploration going.
Yeah.
And that's whenever they discovered a lot of water here.
Yeah.
Uh, was oil exploration, when anybody looking to drill water, nobody was gonna drill that deep.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna go to six hundred.
Yeah, you couldn't afford it.
No, uh-uh. And when they hit it, uh, there was a lot of speculation that that may have released water into other layers that where there was no, no water before, but who cares? I mean, at this point, you trying to go back and figure that one out is.
Yeah. So like you say, when you, when you're looking at your, at your spacing rules and your production rules, you need to consider domestic wells for, for certainly, and like I say, your hydrologist or whoever you're gonna use would be one to ask that question, but you need to figure how far out that there's domestic well stuff that could be affected by that, by that COVID depression.
Right, and those are the one, and that's, that's what I'm saying. If there's a way to redo these, well, we can, those are the ones we need to be marked.
Yeah.
That, that's what we need to be looking at.
And are y'all, on some of the GMAs, like they would model a particular aquifer like the Hick, this was ten years ago, this model, the Hickory in one particular county, do y'all model more than just one aquifer or is your model a general model that the Hick, someone has done? Or does it model for the whole county or aquifer by aquifer?
It's by aquifer.
Okay, that's.
And, and the problem with GMA ten right now and the problem that I'm having.
That's what I'm getting to, we go about.
If you're in Cholwell County, Gare County, or Ames County, which are all in the GMA, and even Medina County, you have Trinity water.
What are they?
We don't have Trinity and y'all don't have Trinity.
No.
And I keep arguing with them when we have an debate because they're, they're asking the hydrologists to calculate the Trinity. I don't care, you guys don't care, you people can pay for that, I don't wanna pay.
Yeah, exactly.
Matt, Matt had a, a really good point of, of whether we use the aqu, whether we're trying to use what aquifer we're in or so if, 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 if you're going by aquifers, right? So it, and you have a total per aquifer, I'm assuming, right? How much water you have per?
That's what your GMA does, you set a number per, well, in this case, y'all's case is GMA ten and GMA thirteen. And GMA ten is setting it for the Edwards. And anything that produces into the Edwards, like I said, east of here, the Trinity has a, has an effect. Like we were talking about a while ago, the Trinity will bleed off into the Edwards. But it doesn't, Santone, it does. In U Valley County, the Trinity water is, is, uh, a Garner Park or whatever, and it's not, you're not getting any Edwards depth to get well below there, so it has no effect on it.
Uh, I think, I think two different things. One, as far as what we're gonna look at, we need to look at, we need to look at what aquifer, what's, what layer the water is coming out of and then surrounding it and it, and it kind of impression. We need to look at the area spacing plus whatever layer it's in. Uh, we, we gotta look at both of those to figure that one out. As far as, as the amounts that we're talking about, the difference in, in, in U Valley and here is they're issuing permits for the amount that's being used. We have a lot of existing historic use permits for large amounts that realistically, you couldn't use them now if you wanted to. Um, unless you're gonna use very labor intensive, uh, irrigation practices in order to use that water. Otherwise, you can't get that much on the ground and use it beneficially.
Money will, money will, will affect it, I mean, you can.
But, but here's the thing, we have a small amount of use out of this permit. It's the amount of use that's gonna get you in trouble in your GMA seven and your GM, meet your desire, your conditions. It's the use, it's not the amount of the permit. Um. So when the, the question, I guess the ultimate question is this, so when they did the Sayer and Bennett deal back in the sixties or whenever it was, and they came out with, was it seventy thousand acre feet or whatever it was? For the county? Uh, it was an average annual recharge number. Uh, uh, was that from the Edwards or from the Edwards Trinity? No, it was for, no, that was for the entire county. That was for the entire county. But, but they didn't know which were, uh, a total for each?
No, they, they just pumped it all together.
Well, actually, if, if, reading through that report, uh, they actually had some really good data for the northeast side of the county because they had, they had a gauge over there on the stream and they could figure out those river basins and the amount of water and what they were seeing in that, in that gauge. And that's how they calculated that, you know, we get this much rain, this is what the recharge is at this, this deal for this area. For the, for the west prong and, and the northeastern part of the county. And then if you read through the study, what they said is they said, now we don't have any information over here, Edwards Trinity. But it's the same exact rock and we expect that it functions the same exact way as far as recharging. So we're going to assume if this input here gives us this number here, then this input over here should give us this number over here. We can't prove this number. They, and they couldn't. And they admitted that in, in the deal. It, it was a hypothetical. They had to, had to say, we got good stuff over here, we're gonna assume this is right for this and apply it that way and come up with a number. Mace came back, I guess it was in oh eight, oh seven, and There's somewhere on there. And, and did a twenty-three page on that and came up with sixty-nine, five hundred. Uh, after correcting mathematical stuff. Um, I read through that paper, but I, I'll tell you it's way above me. It, it's all the math on Bennett and Sayer and what was.
Bennett and Sayer did that in sixty-two and, and considering the science they had available for them, they did.
They did a good job.
But part of it was, I think, they didn't do it for the office in Austin or whatever, they went out, physically did it on the ground.
Yeah, uh, it, I, you know, it's good, the thing about it is, is it's, it's simply an average of what we should get.
Yeah.
You know, it's not necessarily what we got. And it's certainly not what we got in the ground or what we can use at any given point.
Vic, quick question too, how do you monitor irrigated acres? How do you know how many irrigated acres you have in U Valley County?
Well, you can get it through the soil conservation too, to have Farmers Home Administration, uh.
FSA.
FSA, yeah. They can tell you how many acres. Because everybody's pretty much getting crop payments on those acres and they know how many acres they're, they're paying crop payments on. Uh, but.
Yeah, I didn't know, you know, because I know Dr. Hutchinson was always trying to figure out and whatever, they do satellite stuff and but you know, he knew kind of what it was, but I didn't know where he got.
Well, what, on sale, ours, we're basing it on the permits. When a guy comes in for a permit, how many acres you planning on irrigating from the permit?
Right, so he says, I got a whatever, five hundred acres that I wanna irrigate or whatever. But how do you know he has five hundred acres? How do you know he doesn't have a thousand acre?
We don't really, I mean, we're, we're, we're working off of. A lot of them, it's small enough, small enough community like this that we kind of know. No, you don't have, no, I was talking about the ads in the paper. We had one several years ago, gentleman owns about half the damn county over there, applied for a well and his former went to fill it out, well, the template said, how many acres are you going to irrigate? He read that to me, how many acres do we have? He put five thousand acres. New Acid River Authority at the town was down the hall and across from me in the building. They came down there and said, what do I have to do? God, Mims came down and said, what do I have to do to protest this, this, this well? And I said, where you gonna protest? There's no way being next to the New Acid River, he can take five thousand acres, irrigate five thousand acres and not affect our, our river, you know, boss. What are you talking about? It's always looked at the permit and that's, it's always back in the, well, he probably gonna irrigate sixty acres. No, 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 he put five thousand. That's what the ranch has, so I, I had them create, run a different ad, you know, I had to call the foreman up and he needed to run a different ad, saying what really is there. But yeah, we had a few protests like that, but they read it, they didn't go away, this could happen.
Well. Uh, this is kind of interesting, I don't know if anybody's been looking through these at all while we've been sitting here talking. Uh, if the pumping rate causes detrimental impact to any landowner's wells, base spring flow or aquifer, the district shall have the authority to cause a decrease in pumping or stoppage of pumping until recharge is occurred. What page are you on? That's page sixteen, that's E three underneath testing permits. Uh, that's during any time during that year. Yep, the big paragraph. It's kind of a, yeah, well, it's got some interesting stuff in it. I just happened to glance over and, yeah. Yeah, if, uh, in the middle of that, uh, one year period, if pumping rate causes detrimental impact to any landowner's wells, base spring flow or the aquifer, the district shall have the authority to cause a decrease in pumping or stoppage of pumping until recharge is occurred. The pumping may be resumed at a reduced rate once conditions have normalized or the surrounding wells and springs. This process shall continue until a pumping rate is established that is not detrimental to any entity protected by the district's management plan and shall establish sustainable yield. I like the way that reads. The district must approve the meter, the meter and the meter installation. Applicant will be responsible for notifying the district seven days in advance of commencement of the above named activities. The applicant shall bear all costs associated with pump test and monitoring wells and land ownership registered as persons, spring flows or water levels required by the approved pump.
That brings up a point, you might wanna, you have seven days in advance, so that might take care of it. But the Edwards has a deal where the, the driller has to notify them so they can come out and look at it before he's gonna, before he finishes drilling or whatever. Well, I know some drillers that used to finish on a Saturday and a Sunday because they knew nobody was coming out of Santone on Friday afternoon.
I, uh, well, we do have that, I didn't read that part because it's now, it's actually up above that. Uh, if the board approves the applicant, uh, if the board approves the application, applicant will pump the well for minimum one year. Or within one year before a pump test acceptable to the district, the applicant must submit the actual amount pumped by providing monthly pumping reports. The district will reserve the right to observe, monitor and inspect all phases of construction and the pumping test.
Yeah.
We, but.
You might wanna put in there the.
I hear what you're saying, no, we need it, yeah, we need a hook that requires.
Yeah.
Uh.
So that, so that doesn't happen on a, on the Fourth of July or whatever, somebody's here.
Well, we've, the way this is written, okay, we've, we've reserved the right to do so.
Yeah.
But we haven't put an onus to do it.
Yeah.
And, and we need, we need the onus that you have to go inspect before you start.
Yeah.
I would say. Yeah, we, we, we need, you know, that would be a better way of doing it, that you have to.
And now that you've got the manpower to do that, I think that's great. We just, that's what we.
Well, yeah, like I say, it has a manager, you can make them so that it's an appointment type thing.
I think that's.
Well, I mean, you want it.
Yeah, I had, I had a, a guy call me one time that the well driller was coming. He hadn't run his ad in the paper. Technically, he can't drill the well till fourteen days after the end. The paper, I said, go drill the damn well, just don't pump it. Tell them we found that we're not gonna have any protests because you're taking a certain amount of gamble in that that you're spending some money and we get a protest and you're not gonna get to pump it till we, till we get the protest to resolve. But if the, if the well driller is, can get there tomorrow and the next happy he's coming in six months, get him there tomorrow, I would, you know, I mean, I would take the chance.
I'm just making a little note, must inspect prior to use and or protest, uh, and or, um, pump test. I, I don't know how to word that, but yeah, you definitely need to look, you need to make sure the, the meter is on there. And as far as it, it, well, and, and as far as that goes, really, the board, I mean, not the board, but the, the district, district staff or consultants should be there during the pump test.
Yeah.
And I, I just think it's better, it's, it's more transparent that way. If, uh, Hutchinson would have been available to be, we grant, standing there with Grant when he was doing mine, I would have wanted him there.
Exactly.
Yeah, guess he did. Two eyes are better, two sets of eyes are better than one. Uh, and that way.
Now, I tell you, the mystery is to finding out, because y'all have so many more holes than we do in U Valley County, finding out every time you drill one, what the pace of water are and where the water's coming from. I mean, we don't know this resource that.
Well, you know.
Learned a lot, but.
One of the interesting things is just came up in, in my mental map of water resources in Texas. And the, the, uh, the Glen Rose is fairly impermeable where my property is located at. There's no water in the Glen Rose. But there apparently is that way.
Yeah, it is. And, and.
That way there's water in it, you know, somewhere, it was somewhere down, starting at the southeast corner of Kenny County. They think it's in the southeast corner of Kenny County, they're not really sure, they never mapped it. You, you know the ma- Maverick Aquifer, that's what they're calling it now. They're talking about it being fifteen hundred foot there and running down to about fifty-five hundred towards Laredo. But that's all in the Glen Rose and they're saying it's coming out of the Sierra Madre and underneath the real ground. And, and apparently it's fractured.
With that is, that they haven't decided yet, they haven't calculated yet, is how long did it take it to get there? I mean, you know, it may take a million years for, ten thousand years for it to fill up that area where.
Well, yeah, the transmissivity might, you know, it may be a big pool of water down there, you might be able to pull on it, you know, for a day.
Yeah.
I like that.
These draws come in there feeding, you know?
Exactly.
I tell people all the time, I say, if you can take a swimming pool and put a six inch or an eight inch pipe and start sucking water out of it, put a two inch water line feeding it, and it won't take long, the swimming pool will be dry, you know? That's the way aquifers work, same kind of way. You gotta, you gotta have the recharge before you can take the.
Well, they got so excited about that one because the water quality was so high in it.
Yeah.
But the depth of it.
Well, there, there again, you're back to.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of cost and recovery coming out of that aquifer.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take a really, it's not gonna be your average use that, that they're gonna be able to afford to do that.
Mm-hmm, it's gonna have, it's gonna have to be something municipal.
Yeah, city Laredo or something like that.
Yeah, that's only people that could afford to do something like that.
Yeah.
You're certainly not gonna go to a farmer operation. Not even, not even at fifteen hundred feet. It's too deep. It's too deep.
Yep.
So after that. Process. They come back. Three point oh four, after a testing permit. By the district and a well has been pumped for minimum one year or acceptable pump test has been completed, the applicant must have. Submit an application for a regular permit. On a form provided by the district, which must state the quality pumped and requested acre foot. The amount granted. For regular permit may not exceed the maximum amount requested and tested for under the test permit. So. Basically, they're underneath more stringent rules underneath the test permit and they can be cut off at any time. If they're bound to be detrimental. At the end of the one year, they could come back and go for a regular permit. Where they report annually and they're not subject to getting cut off in the middle of the year. That's the benefit of getting the regular permit. But. We need some deadlines, right? Because right now we got it open. You can stay at test permit forever, right?
I don't know. Is that right? Or is that what Ellis says? That's not how I read that, but.
That's what the rules say.
No.
We need it. We need it. We we need something that.
I don't know.
Whatever. They got, they gotta do it within so many days. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get them to, if we're gonna get them out of the testing deal, which is what we got kind of hammered for from the audit. These test permits that have not, not ever been completed. Then there has to be some kind of a, a mechanism that requires it, just like the inspection. When we're talking about, you know, must be inspected prior to use or pumped up by district staff, we have to have an onus that there's a requirement.
But Greg was going to look into that over the week.
Yeah, but.
He was supposed to report.
Yeah, I don't know what he did, but I mean, I mean, to me, reading that, there is an onus here. If you don't do it after a year, then. You know, and that's what the audit said. If you don't do it after a year, then there's an issue.
Well, it says here is it's a minimum.
Well, but I think the intent of that, you'd have to ask the lawyer, because I'm not a lawyer, but. If the intent of that is after you pump it at least one year, then you need to get in here and do it.
Well, the way I read it is.
You can't do it before that.
The way, the way, the way I read it is. You're going to get, you're going to get to do it for a minimum one year. But there's no onus to make you come in here. The only, only onus here is if you want to get a, a less stringent requirement of monthly reporting to the annual. That's the only, that's the only, that's the only real push.
That's what Greg would have to say, you know, so yeah, so I don't know how we get out of the situation we're in. Or if we're really in a situation, if the rules. You know, I mean, the audit said we broke the rules, but if Greg says we didn't, then that's.
All you do is says a deadline on it. That's all you need to do.
Well, I, I don't, my thing is, I I think we've got a problem whether.
Either way.
Yeah, all right. Okay, we got a problem. We need to fix it. Yeah, right? So. Uh, whether we broke our rules or didn't break our rules, the, the rules have a hole in them. From my perspective, regardless, that needs to be fixed somehow.
Sure.
We need to close the loop.
Process needs to be well defined because how we intended the process and then how the general manager at the time read the process, which completely. We didn't want there to be two hearings and there were two hearings because the last thing districts want are hearings. They're costly, they're expensive, and all we wanted for the first. When you apply. And now that y'all have Jim, then Jim comes out and says, you you develop a process to where I want this well. And he says, well, we're going to test these wells around you. Are you going to do a pump test? Are you going to pump? Just decide on that. And then after a year, then there's a hearing and Jim comes in and presents the evidence and he said. This well produced five hundred acre feet of water and it didn't have any significant impact on the area. Then the board makes that decision or. He pumped five hundred acre feet of water and all the wells went down in the region and we cut him back and cut him back to fifty acre feet and we didn't see a, a, you know. A way to issuing a permit in that region that wouldn't affect the region. You hear Jim. Jim is your.
Well, yeah, I, well, having a hearing at the, having a hearing at the get go, if you're going to have a testing phase. Seems redundant.
It is, and all, all, at that time, we needed to, we needed people, we put it in the paper. That we wanted people to come in and say. We want to be a part of the process. We want our wells to be monitored and that's all they were supposed to be doing is come in and saying, yes, we want. Dr. Gold at the time to monitor the wells and you, and you signed up for the list and then a year later you decided. What impact that well had on, on those people.
If you're gonna, if you're going to. I think what we need to do is. Maybe if we're going to go through the testing process, we need to tighten up. To some extent, not only do we need to close this three hundred sixty five day loop, but maybe tighten up. The district's monitoring. Of that testing process because the, the, what's written in here is gives us the authority to stop that, okay? But we don't have anything in here to make sure that we'll, we'll make sure it's not happening. Right? And making sure it's not happening in the right area. That was my, that was my other complaint on the, on, you know, where we're monitoring, the way they're written now. Anybody comes in to that first hearing and wants interested party status, they get monitored. Regardless of whether they're in the right level, the right area, wherever they're at.
Who's Jim now?
We want, we want to make, well, we want to get good results and know if they're actually hurting anyone. With what they're doing and how much water they use.
And you may not want to happen it for a year if it's depleted now for.
But if we can tighten up, if we can tighten up the district's monitoring of that year, okay? I, we have someone that goes out monthly now and checks. Wells are being used, actively being pumped, crops being grown on. Well, that would be on the list too. You know, a- anything that was in the test process will be on the list to see. Whether they're, whether they're pumping what they said they were pumping, pumping on their monthly report and everything else.
And how that.
And to collect the data around on the different transducers around the area that are being looked at. So you can make that determination. In other words, what I'm saying, instead of. Giving it to them for a year and just letting them do what they want and not paying any attention, right? You, 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 you watch carefully, monitor closely. So you can stop and come back in the middle of your three hundred sixty five days, come back to the board and talk to him and say, hey, look. We, you, you gotta cut this off. Wells are dropping forty foot all around. Um, where you can do that, but. You probably got to have to have something in the rules about that to make sure that it's done. Because we don't know, might not be Marty five years from now doing it. Might not be any of us sitting here on the board five years from now.
The whole problem is. You have to have the accountability to go back and look at the rules whenever you do this with the provision. So. It's like we were talking about last week in this meeting is that. Once that flag goes up that somebody's going to drill a well, because this doesn't happen every day. In Kenny County, it doesn't even happen once a year. I don't know when the last well was drilled. That's not an exempt well in Kenny County. I couldn't tell you. I've been here my whole life. Uh, it's been probably twenty years. Um, so just like you said, Marty may not be in that chair in twenty years. So that's the whole issue here is that we have to have some kind of. Accountability where we know this is what we've got to do. This is what we've got to do in the future because I think a lot of what happened with these test permits is that. Nobody looked at the rules and said, this is what we've got to do.
Well, and you have to interpret them too and. To be completely honest, um. A lot of the ideas and the concepts that were written in here were really fantastic, but. They were a little ahead of their time. They didn't have.
That we have now.
They didn't have enough, they didn't have enough information and data in order to implement it correctly. We've got some of that now. We can, we can, we can, we can make some of this happen now.
But what you might want to consider is running that by your hydrologist or whoever it is you're, you're.
Oh, absolutely. We're just, we're just footballing right now.
Well, and and asking him, this is what we're thinking. What do we need to do to tweak this so that it will be the most. Uniform and the, the most science based. You know, that, because I want to guarantee, I, I ask Ron Green all the time or somebody, you know, I'll call one of them, they look. You know, we're going to do this. How's that going to work out? How do you think it's going to work out, you know? And I'll give you an example. We have an irrigation well up in Yato people that golf course is. Now, part of it was the guy that would drill the golf course had more money than, than most people. But there was a little old lady on the corner of the property. She probably three hundred yards from where his well was going to be. She called up and said, you know, I'm worried that he's going to, they're fixing to drill the irrigation well over here. The scuff will, I'm afraid they're going to drive by house with. So I told her. How to register the complaint, that there'll be an ad in the paper a couple of days. When you see that ad. You know, send me a letter and it will, and so what the guy agreed to was. We had asked, I had asked a hydrologist, he had asked another hydrologist. His well, the welder had told him, so I drilled her well, I'm drilling yours. Yours is a whole lot different than hers. It's not even going to be in the same strata. So what we did was he turned his on, we created a lake out there and we ran it for seventy two hours. And we tested hers right before he turned his on and we tested hers right after he turned his off. And it was no, that no level, the water level was constant and hers, it never moved. So at that point she said, I would draw my protest, you know, but he had offered. If it did, he was going to drill his well anyway, but if it does affect hers, I will replace her well with something that will work. Even though my irrigation well is gone. So, you know, I mean, so she.
It was going to be reasonable.
Yeah, he was more than reasonable about it, you know.
And she was concerned and he addressed it and then.
Yeah.
Done deal. That's the way it's supposed to work.
I called two different hydrologists to make sure that my plan. Was reasonable and would, and would work out at the end of the day, you know. I asked the well driller, he told me, and so then I called two different hydrologists to make sure that what I was planning on doing was really going to. Bear fruit.
Well, Uvalde's been lucky too, is you've always been the one there. So it's always been consistently read and consistently done. And we've had so many. Different people and they read it different and then two separate things sit down and that's when districts get.
Well, but like I say, if you put in the rules where it's pretty plain. To figure out and then just refer to them all the time, you know.
Okay, so in my notes, I have A, B and C. A being district has to start. District has to inspect before start and that finish. Throughout the course of it.
Yeah, which we, which we do normally anyway, but. I just think that we need to tighten it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, those reports should be in the file with the permit, you know.
They are, and they turn them in.
There was, if there was ever any question, you could always go back and say, well, who did this? You know, what happened?
B would be.
Oh, you're talking about the inspection reports, yes.
Yeah.
Determine monetary zones. Of monitoring, which is repeating itself by water district, hydrologist and engineer with board approval. C would be provision for groundwater district employee to inspect and report once a month. But I think we need to add more to it. I think there was more wording on that. Does anybody have anything they want to add to that? Provision for groundwater district employee to inspect and report once a month because it need to be. Groundwater representative or employee because if it's Jim or it's Marty or we don't.
Ah, you could just put staff member.
The district.
The district shall.
Okay.
That covers it all.
Yeah, that way it gets your. Hydrologist you contracted with or whatever.
Or Marty or the general manager. The district shall inspect. In personnel policy, you can tag one. In your rules, make it the district. Because then you change your personnel policy if you decide to put it on somebody else. At least that's the way I would do it. But in order, you were asking.
You really got me intrigued with the way y'all do stuff over there. Oh, my gosh.
You were talking about additional, we're talking about additional, you're talking about additional wording.
But, but like I said, aquifers act different in different locations. Want to work on the east side of Uvalde, won't work on the west side, you know. In some cases.
A lot of vapor.
Get observe and moniker stuck in there. Those are good catchwords.
Doesn't help if we don't take notes on this stuff.
I'm just writing it down.
All right. Greg will have to go.
Put it in there and then Greg can massage whatever I got in there.
What are we thinking on the uh? The motivation of wrapping it up in three hundred and sixty five days?
I don't know. I mean, we could do, we, you could set, you know. Maybe something like, you know, at the end of your three hundred and sixty five days, um. It has to come up review for the board. Uh, to, to make a determination on whether you're going to extend that testing period. You're going to end that testing period?
Adjusting out pump.
You know, if you end that testing period.
But my deal is if the.
That, that puts a real, that puts a real push on them to get a regular permit. Because you just ended it right then.
And they can't operate it without operating permit.
Bingo. So you, you make it reviewable by the, by the board thirty days after. With the board, with the board able to, to make a determination if they need to extend that period for some reason, maybe. Maybe it's been really, really wet and it's gotten dry right towards the end and you want to see what it's, how it's responding in a more dryer period. Than a wet period. So you want to give them another six months and they're good with that.
But what if they just haven't done anything? Because don't we have some that have done that?
Well, if they don't have anything and you've written it in here for thirty day review, that you can extend it or revoke it.
And it's stopped.
Then, then it's, it's up to the board. They can, they can extend it or they can stop it right then and there. I'm, that's, that's a real simple way to do it. That's not necessarily the best way to do it, but I mean, it's, it's the one way. Uh. Put it right back up before the board and like I said, there could be some cause. I can't think of one, but. There could be some cause and the board might want to extend it for six months to let them test a little while longer. Maybe the permanent team wants to test a little while longer. Uh. If they don't, if they haven't done anything, the board has the option that after that thirty days, after the three hundred and sixty five day period. They review it, they can stop the testing period. Right now, we don't have anything in here that, that says the board can just. At any particular time, but we've given them a deadline thirty days after their, their three hundred and sixty five days, the board goes back and reviews what they've got. And makes a determination whether they want to extend it or not. And they're going to have to come in and ask for an extension. If they want to keep running this test permit and not get a regular one, or they're going to have to apply for a regular permit.
So on the financial end, is there a deposit required? To start the testing permit process?
Uh, do not believe so. The big benefit to keeping a testing permit at this point over a regular permit is you're only paying for the amount of water you use instead of the entire amount of permit. Right now, if you have a permit in Kenny County for a hundred acre foot, you pay for that hundred acre foot, whether you pumping outs of it or not. So there is an advantage to someone in a testing. That has a testing permit to keep it a testing permit forever right now, because they're only paying for the amount of water that they pump. Not the amount of water the permit is for. So it's one of my beasts about this district. When you, when you charge the full, when you charge a full amount for a permit, whether it's being pumped or not, you're not loving God's relationship.
I was just wondering. So we're not wasting each other's time with monitoring everything else because if somebody comes in, say that Vic comes in and he applies for a permit on a well. And Jim and Marty scramble to get all this monitoring equipment in this area and then they don't do anything for a year. Due to that cost. The taxpayers.
What, what is the benefit to ask for the test permit if you're not going to pump it?
I'm saying that things happen. In the course of year. Somebody applies for a test permit and they go bankrupt, they sell the property, whatever else. We need to clean this up. For, I think that the test permit should be canceled on the change of real estate. I think it should be canceled. I think that. I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a twenty five hundred dollar deposit for water monitoring setup. On a well, because this is going to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, let's be honest here, right? Twenty five hundred dollar deposit and it's forfeited at the end of the three hundred and sixty five day plus the thirty day end review that you're talking about. It's forfeited and to do it again, you have to spend another twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Give me five thousand dollars or whatever it is. Make it to where we have.
Yeah, I like their.
Have some kind of motivation. For a test permit every year and we can go do the same thing again. Go ahead and start.
Oh, I, 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 I see, I see the angle you're coming out. I hadn't thought about that.
I like that. I'll.
I was thinking about finishing. If I get started a project, I want to finish it. And think about what you're talking about. That's interesting.
The person asking for it is getting something in return. The person asking for it is getting something in return. You're getting a well and so I like.
You're not paying for the water you're going to use, but you're paying for, hey. Let's be honest, it's going to take y'all two or three days to go out there and set up.
Cost to the districts.
We didn't do that like that on domestic permits.
I'm going to think about that. I'll, I'll.
I like that.
Yeah, there's something there.
You got to think of it like a business.
Well, no, I like that. Well, the ideal of a, the ideal of, of, of putting in, um. A deposit in order to do that, number one, it can offset some of the costs of, of, of the monitoring. But like you said, that, that if that is enough. If that's high enough, you're not going to want to do that every year.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you're not going to want to do that.
So you, but this is where the record keeping, and this is what I was talking to Marty about, where we need to count down. Take three hundred and sixty-five days, a letter sent. We need to clean this up. You've got thirty days. Board's going to review it at the end of thirty days. And if it's not, your deposit's forfeited, maybe twenty-five hundred is not enough. Maybe it needs to be five thousand. I don't know, but. There needs to be something there to where, because this is taxpayer money that we're dealing with for the most part, right?
Janet administration is speaking like, like every well is going to cost the same up to a certain point. But then what we did on Grass Valley, when they wanted eighteen thousand acre feet of water. And the fee for that every year, the annual fee was a hundred and eighty thousand, because it was commercial permit going to Laredo. We made them put a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the bank in escrow while they went through the permit process.
That might have discouraged them from doing what they're.
So you might discourage over pumping that way by saying you, you want five thousand acre feet. Well, then. It's twenty-five hundred administrative plus so much per.
If you did the.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, a water well in Kenny County today, if I wanted to drill an exempt well on my property, and I don't know about U Valley. But we've had this conversation before, before you were on the board. To do a domestic well in Kenny County on my property, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, they cost thirty thousand in U Valley.
What's twenty-five hundred bucks for a fifty acre? Per a fifty acre foot well.
And, and you're talking about a lot bigger well than a six inch well. So.
I'm talking, yeah, you're talking about a big well.
You're talking about a lot of money. So the twenty-five hundred is not going to be.
You're not talking about a six inch well necessarily. It depends on the withdrawal rate of it.
Yeah.
We got where the people wouldn't give us their log. We'd have to go look online and get them. And so what we did was we charged a hundred dollar deposit and you give us the log. Within sixty days of drilling the well, we'll give you back your hundred dollars. You'd be surprised how many hundred dollars we get to keep.
No, I wouldn't.
I mean, when, when we came up with that idea, they said something that I said, don't worry, I'd get my money back.
You know, there's a way, there's a way to address that though. And if we were talking about monitoring based upon, you know. We would need a much bigger monitoring area if we were doing a thousand acre foot permit as opposed to doing a fifty acre foot permit. You could, you could scale that.
You could.
You could scale that too.
Administration play plus a scale.
Well, it's possible.
But you're also putting another can of worms.
Somebody gives you.
We're going to prorate.
Yeah, you know, you need to make, you need to make it high enough that it's, that it's an insurance, not to, not to follow through, but. But it's not so high that it's a current that nobody is going to want to ever do it.
Well, Blake, you were saying they forfeit it. Are you mean that if they do finish in a year or the timeline?
If they don't forfeit, if they don't finish in a year.
They forfeit.
They forfeit it because some of these test permits that we've had are. Four, five, maybe years old.
But what if they do finish? Do they get their money?
They could.
Hang on, hang on, hang on a minute. We got a little confusion here, because there's nothing for them to finish if we're monitoring. We're monitoring, we're the ones that finish. They don't, if they do a pump test, then they have to, then they have something they have to finish, but.
But what Randy's saying is if they complete their well, their test, everything with the district at the end of it, and their well goes into production and use. Do they get that twenty-five hundred, five thousand dollars back?
And if they do, that doesn't help us defray the cost of.
I would say would be.
Of our monitoring, you know, I thought we were going to try to. Defray our costs a little bit, Blake. I'm, I think your idea is great, you know?
Yeah, it wouldn't be a deposit.
We used to think about it.
We just need to get a little money.
What should the husband pay for?
For our effort, you know?
Not getting anything. This husband wasn't getting anything.
I thought you were suggesting to give it back if they got it in the service.
Not.
We need to get. Hey, we charge a fee, we charge a fee for, for, for the application. We charge a ten dollar fee for a domestic well and fifty dollars for anything not exempt. Not exempt wells for a fifty dollar fee. And we flat key for office, for office personnel use or whatever.
Well, that's killer.
They're probably limited by statute.
And, and the theory on that was I had a board member that was a pump installer. And he said, you know, people come in here and apply for a well, for a domestic, domestic well. And the office does all that. Coming out of my damn tax money. We need to charge you some kind of fee. Because the person that's benefiting from that is the person drilling the damn well, not me. So I would, I think that they should pay, like I said, we came with a mountain of fee, but it's ten dollars.
Well, and you're keeping the record and maintaining the record and.
You've got expenses.
Yeah, you have expenses associated with it.
Well, like I say, but it's, it's coming out of every taxpayer in the county's pocket.
And so I just said a minute ago.
But it's still coming out of their pocket. And they're not benefiting from some guy down the south into the county getting a water well for his. For his house or for his livestock or whatever, you know?
Well, I, and I understand that. I just want to be reasonable all sides.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, it's not reasonable to tag somebody that wants to have a small well or, or do a hundred acres and that. You know, ask to monitor somebody fifty miles away from them either.
People will do this faster than they'll do something, any way, when you can stay away from punitive actions. In other words, make it so in the rules, our permits renew every year as long as you pay your fees and as long as you comply with all the.
Yes.
So we don't make it punitive. They just, the only way they get to play in this playground is if they follow the rules and pay the hyper. So. Anything you can do in that vein where it's not punitive that incentivizes people to do. So I like the B. And I also like graduated on, you know, if it's fifty acre feet relative to. Something else. And don't make it so much that it cuts off people that. You don't want it to, for only rich people to be able to afford the wells heater. So that you have to.
You could almost do an ag exemption in a commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I, I, the one thing we want to discourage, right? Commercial land. I don't know. I don't know if you do that legally.
Like if the city wanted to drill a well somewhere.
Well, that would be a different deal, because.
Then you can say, how do we do this to make it? As beneficial to the city as we possibly can, and yet you have to be fair to Marty over there. So. The rule has to apply to both, but.
The thing that nobody wants is transportation.
That's exactly, that's exactly.
Absolutely. And, and it's already, it's already in the statute to make it more difficult.
Yeah, we put, when we put it in there, you had to be. The user to get the transportation. That, that's a real high bar. And, and the reason, I don't need a transportation permit. I'll never need a transportation.
Well, the thing about it is, to get the transportation permit, you have to have it all in play. So. The way I read them, you, you've got to have, you've got to have the contract.
Exactly.
Before you can even come in and ask for it.
Because we don't want the district to go through another Grass Valley hearing with developer. We learned a lot the hard way.
Yeah, well, everybody does.
Well, and you know, you. Denette and I have talked a lot about these rules over the years and. One of the things that she has mentioned to me many, many times is you write them and then you use them and then you figure out where you missed.
Yeah. Oh yeah, they're, they're an evolving thing. You know, I left a hole there. I didn't realize I left.
Or an open loop, like many of them, three hundred and sixty-five days.
It just got regular. Yeah. That's, that's, that's not how we, when we walked into the office to get that test permit, that's not how we saw it happening. They read it wrong the first reads.
Okay. So deposit required. Do we want to think on that?
On the amount or? Yeah. Yeah, I see what you, I see what David's reading. You know, it does say here, it says the applicant must admit. You say, say when.
Consult on the amount of the deposit, because he might be able to tell you. Gauge on how much water it's going to be, how much, how much material it's going to take to, to monitor that. And so your deposit needs to be. Kind of elevated as you go.
Well, depending on where you're drilling, you may be checking, you may be gauging two wells and you may be gauging thirty wells.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I'm thinking your, your, your hydrologist or where we.
I suspect, I suspect when we talk to him, the, the whole monitor thing is going to be based off of. Withdrawal and amount, average amount as far as how far out you got to go and look and.
Yeah. Oh yeah. It, it, the, the amount withdrawal is going to be. Yeah. The COVID depression is going to be based on that. Yeah.
That coupled with, with the annual rate, uh, annual amount is going to be the two biggest. Two biggest determining factors. Yeah.
Really going to have to lean on him for tolerance. Because no is always a bad answer. It leads to lawsuit. So if you say you can't have it, what is your tolerance going to be? To where you don't end up in court. And what he said. As long as you're fair, you're going to.
I see.
You're going to survive, but.
Be equal at all.
No is a bad answer. Even if it's the right answer, it's a, it's a hard answer to give. No is a hard answer to give for this.
Yeah, I remember this district, don't it? Grass Valley. Anybody got anything else for tonight? You're, you're going to have to have a clause in there in case somebody. Is there, if there's anything detrimental to somebody else, to be able to shut them off. Oh no, we got that. No, we got that in here. We got that right here.
That's actually worded very well.
Yeah, that one, I liked it. I love the wording on it. The district reserve, uh.
We've learned mistakes like that too.
As long as that's in there, you gotta check it out.
Prepared for it.
Get the pumping rates, causes detrimental impacts to any land under dwell. Case spring flow or aquifer. I mean, I, I, if there's something else that needs to be covered, somebody needs to point it out to me, because they could really hit them all. Yeah. Any adjacent land under dwell, base spring flows or the aquifer. The district shall have the authority to cause a decrease in pumping or stoppage of pumping until recharges occur. That's pretty strong.
Yeah, it is.
How do we want to handle this? Do you want me to type these up? Marty, you probably don't have notes on all this, right?
I wrote some notes, but.
And send it to Marty to send to Greg for.
Type them up, type them up and send them all on.
All of them?
Yeah, certainly. I'm going to work on some of this.
Some suggestions.
You send that to me, I'll implement those on this.
Do you want me to leave these with you?
No, I mean, if you want to, I can do it or you can do it or. To everyone, however you want to do it.
I'm going to shoot you the email and then you email it to her. Right? That way you got.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, but I am using my iPad.
Vic, you want a copy of our rules to, to review and look at?
Sure.
I'd be able to help.
Sure.
Just, are you giving them yours?
I'm giving mine.
Okay. We'll get you another one.
What you, y'all just did, uh.
We were just talking about section three and, and it starts on page fourteen.
Yeah.
And that's really, we were just talking about the testing.
On our audit, that's one of the, so we wanted to brush on it.
And that's why I wanted to go to that tonight, because we, we got hit on it in audit and I expect some of these are coming. We're, we're going to have his bearings on these. Uh, so we better get familiar with it.
Kent Lowry wrote transport from, uh, because he was used to doing big projects. And his whole motive was how do I protect the spring? And if it leaves, how do people in Kenny County get paid? And he said, I'm not going to let them walk off. With all our water not get paid. So he did, he did those, I said, the most qualified to do that. So, but nobody's tested them.
The bar is set pretty high.
Real high.
Yeah. I, I don't know that I'll see the day that those get tested. We'll see.
Hey Wes, quick question. Are we hiring Vic as a consultant or could we if we're not? Like, are we going to compensate the good man here?
Uh, we had not talked about that. Um, we can certainly discuss that in a.
I think that would be fair.
I get phone calls from, from the Cariza district, the lady that runs it now. Used to work there. She didn't run it. She called me all the time. Hey, what do we need to do about this? What do we, you know, I mean.
Well, we thank you, like we're grateful for your help, but I'm just saying, you know, his help is worth something.
Expensive too.
What we need to do about this to keep you out of trouble.
I, I, I agree with you.
I think that'd be a good idea. Put it on the next, on our gym.
So we just, we'll just address it.
Hey Jim, are you with us?
You've given us some good advice.
I agree completely, no. And his, sir, his expenses could be off.
All right. Do you have anything you want to comment on?
Um, yeah, uh, no, Blake, I'm, I'm good. Uh, Mr. Hillbrand's comments, I think were absolutely essential. I think it's, it's very interesting to me to see, to dislisten. How you value doing things a little bit different than we are. Um, your questions about aquifer withdrawal rate, all of that is exactly all the data and all the equipment that we're trying to get that data. For y'all to make decisions, but, uh, no, I'm just listening and thank you though. Unless y'all have questions for me.
I think we're good. We appreciate your time though.
I don't at the moment.
Yeah.
I don't have anything right now.
No, I'm good.
I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jim.
No move.
Okay.
This has been made in second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Thanks. We are adjourned.